Here.
Here.
And Councilmember Daniels is absent this evening, Mayor.
Okay. I would invite you all to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item tonight is a public hearing to consider vacation of a portion of Ninetieth Street right-of-way.
Yes, Council, I'm not sure if all of you recall or were made aware of it, but we had, for the new country village apartment project, we had a variance request with respect to a setback. And without the granting of that variance, the developer would have incurred quite a bit of expense in redoing of their building. So just after reviewing the application at the staff level, we decided that it just really was not a, we didn't feel like the application qualified for the criteria on a variance. So in talking to the applicant, we suggested vacating part of the right-of-way, but then taking an easement back over the same area that we're vacating. And by doing that, that addresses the issue because you're essentially, you know, the property line is being moved. It creates more property, although the city still has full access via the easement. So Jeff Zimmerman is here, and I've been working with Jeff on this, and he's tendered the easement that I prepared over the ground, so we have that. And we have done this a few times before over the years to address similar situations. So, but in order to vacate right-of-way, it is a public hearing item, so.
Okay. You want to do the public hearing or council comment after the public hearing? Does it matter?
Doesn't matter. Whatever you want to do is fine.
I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on the vacation of right-of-way of Ninetieth Street, please come to the podium. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask if council has any questions or concerns they'd like to express to staff. So is the ordinance later in the agenda then?
No, the ordinance was included with this public hearing item.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
It's just attached to the memo.
Ordinance number 2464, Council.
We have a motion on ordinance.
I make a motion, we have the ordinance 2464. That is written.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any questions or discussion of the motion? If not, roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Tom Michael?
Yes.
Maredog?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, the question here.
Our next item is a public hearing to consider the establishment of a redevelopment district in the thirty-four, three-hundred-and-forty thousand block, thirty-four thousand block of Commerce Drive. I should be able to read numbers. I might not allow.
There's no, there's no comma separator.
Who starts this off?
I think Patrick can introduce the.
Sure.
Yeah, thanks.
And actually Kevin Wimpy is here, and I've asked Kevin just to make a few comments just about the process of TIF, exactly what is presented here tonight to you.
Okay.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Kevin Wimpy from Gilmore and Bell, the city's bond council. Yeah, I'll give you the quick refresher on the TIF process and where we're at and some of the materials in front of you. And to step back, you'll likely recall TIF's a two-step process, and the first is establishing your TIF district, which is the action before you tonight, and then the second is adopting a project plan. So those are the two large steps involved with TIF. And that first step, when you establish your TIF district, the effect is that you set the assessed valuation, the base assessed valuation for the TIF district. And for requests like this one, where it's the property tax increment that funds project costs, the effect is that the increment generated over that assessed valuation, a portion of that goes back towards eligible TIF project cost. So you're setting the best base assessed valuation and also triggers a 30-day veto period for the county and the school district that begins with the public hearing tonight. So those are the two big effects there on adopting the ordinance. And then looking forward, similar to how this item was noticed by, you know, mailing to the property owners as well as publication in the paper, we'll go through that whole notice and pros, notice and hearing process again and have an ordinance for you that would approve the project plan at a future meeting. And the project plan really gets down into the nuts and bolts of what's going to be built and under what terms. A draft of it is included with your packet tonight that we expect to be substantially final. And then the effect of that, we'll also have a development agreement to go along with that, that really sets the business terms of the deal. And then you're limited in Kansas to a 20-year window where you can collect property tax increment for your TIF project, and adopting the project plan begins that 20-year clock. So that's, that's high level about both steps. Again, tonight you're approving the district plan, which is included in the ordinance. That's for consideration tonight following the public hearing. And again, that begins the veto rights for 30 days for the school district and county.
Okay. Questions from council? Mr. Wimpy?
Do, do we know, what is the financing mechanism for the infrastructure that would be paid by the TIF financing? So is it, is it a conventional financing? Is it private activity bonds? Is it, how is that financed?
Sure. So this, this is what's called a pay-as-you-go or pay-go TIF, and the developers fronting all project costs, and then the property tax increment that's generated within the district would be used to reimburse over that 20-year window eligible property costs, excuse me, eligible project costs. And in TIF, you're limited to basically horizontal infrastructure. So it's your site work, demolition where necessary, and streets and other horizontal infrastructure.
So the developer will be responsible for carrying the financing for the, for the duration of the cost obligation? I guess it's, because as lots change hands, you know, there's, there's got to be financing for that, I presume, that's independent of the financing of the overall project, right? So what is that, what is that mechanism? Is it bonds? Is it conventional financing?
Sure.
Or do, or do we know or do we care?
Well, again, the pay-go TIF structure is, you know, the city's general fund isn't at risk. You're not fronting any money.
Right, I understand that part.
And the financing costs are carried by the developer, but financing costs are an eligible project cost under the TIF Act. And the developer in this case has, part of the request is to reimburse for financing costs. But again, those will, those costs will also only be reimbursed using the new incremental property tax revenues. And the, the business deal behind that, whether it's, you know, if we want to talk about percentages or the amount, that'll be, that's set forth in the development agreement that'll be agreed to at the same time a project plan is considered. So there'll be an opportunity to negotiate the terms of that, but part of the developer's request is reimbursement of financing costs.
So who will be paid back? What entity gets paid back over the term of the, of the amount that can be recovered through the TIF financing? Who gets paid back?
It'll be Hike Properties, the applicant here.
Okay. So they will be, they will be the ones obligated. Is that a transferable debt? Could Hike Properties at some point say that we're going to transfer that debt associated with the infrastructure construction along with, say, some of the available lots?
Yeah, the city will have approval rights, any sort of transfer or assignment of the obligations or, you know, obligation to construct the project or rights to reimbursement would be subject to city council approval.
Yeah, but once we approve like an 80%, that doesn't get changed by, by any sale or resale or value.
Right. Once you adopt a project plan, and in this case the 80% you're referring to is the percentage of the increment that'll be reimbursed to developer.
Right, right.
Yeah, so once the business deal is set, you're right, there, there is a mechanism in the stiff, TIF statute to go back and amend the business deal, but you go through the same notice and hearing process, similar to what, what you're looking forward to now where you notice a public hearing and adopt an ordinance amending your project plan at that point.
So that really could be discussed at this time prior to.
The, the business deal and the project plan and the development agreement, those are going to be discussed at a future city council meeting, I believe in about two months' time, a month and a half or so. What you're signing off on tonight is the broader district plan, which is contained in the text of the ordinance before you. So again, tonight, the, the effect is you're setting the base assessed valuation of your TIF district and also starting the school district and county's veto period. The, the business deal and the percentage and so forth, they are contained in the draft project plan in front of you, but that project plan will be approved or considered by the city at a later meeting. But, but you're correct, the draft project plan, the intent in including a draft and providing it upfront at this time was to provide long-range visibility as to what the expectations would be.
Another question, since you mentioned school district, I may be getting out, way out in front of my, in front of ourselves here, but isn't the school district's portion held harmless, therefore the concept that the school district could appeal it should be moot?
The, the school district's partially held harmless. There are several funds and mill levies underneath school finance, and the first 20 mills, the base 20 mills is how we refer to it, is held harmless, along with their eight mills of capital outlay. So I think the, I think the school district's aggregate mills is approximately 65 or so, I might, might be in the ballpark, and 28 of that, so roughly, you know, 40, 45% of their millage is held harmless under the TIF Act. So there, there is a portion that is subject to TIF.
Okay. Yeah, well, and, and, you know, I've said this to council before, my, my opinion is that, that I, I think the, our schools are, are golden goose, and, and I'm always going to advocate that we hold the school district harmless. That's just my opinion.
But in the long run, I mean, this is, that's the whole point of this process, is that we're going to create tax revenue on a property that is generating about $15 a year for the district right now, so.
Right. So as long as we're not creating any harm in it, you know.
And in this case, it's probably not as likely as would be an apartment complex or something, residential situation.
And, and also the, the base assessed valuation, which in this case is real, you know, fairly low because they're empty lots, that all still is collected like a normal property tax and distributed to the taxing jurisdictions as otherwise would occur. It's the incremental property tax on top of the base, right?
Right, okay.
And is the base assessed value not mentioned in the ordinance itself, or is it in here that I'm not seeing?
No, I don't, it's not mentioned.
Doesn't have.
It's just by date.
Just a date type thing, okay.
Anything else? All right. Not, then I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Councilmembers. My name is Matt Goff. I'm with Barbara Emerson Law Firm in Lawrence. I'm here tonight on behalf of Hike Properties, the applicant. And much of what I would say has already been covered, but I'd hit a few highlights from the draft project plan because, first of all, the, the district that you're being asked to form today, thank you, is on, on the screen, and the project plan that will be submitted will be the exact same geography, so there'll be one project plan for the district, the draft of which is enclosed, and we don't anticipate there being many changes from the draft that you have. The highlights of the, the project plan, just, just for information, is that this project involves the construction of several new public streets. The new public streets make a more safe and more efficient development for these outlots. It makes it a little easier to develop them. But the cost of those streets would be the primary reimbursable expense, and by putting in the streets, it doesn't necessarily create a dollar-for-dollar increase in value of the lots that would be marketed. So tax increment financing is used to bridge that gap. The request itself is not for what I'd call a full TIF. First of all, the proposal would be to capture 80% of the increment, not 100% of the increment. And also, there's no request to pick up any of the sales tax increment in the district. So whereas today, there's no sales taxes in the district, any sales inside the district, the local component of it would immediately flow through to the governing bodies. The plan itself calls for the reimbursement of some, but not all, of the developer's land acquisition costs. And Mrs. McPherson, I think you've got the mouse, do you not, or who?
I do.
Oh, you do, sorry, Mike. Could you go to Exhibit A, please? This picture shows the list of development costs, and I'd point out, for example, on land acquisition, there's, I'll call it 950,000 of estimated costs to be incurred to acquire the balance of the district, but only approximately 261,000 be submitted for reimbursement. That number represents the developer's estimate of value of the right-of-way being dedicated in the district. So it's a reduction of what the statute might permit down to really what the right-of-way component would be. And that, in effect, takes the, the total estimate of reimbursable development costs from 2.6, almost 2.7 million, down to right around 2 million. The Exhibit C shows kind of a rough, as stabilized estimate of the tax increment that this district would generate. And the most notable thing, I suppose, for today is to show at the bottom that the taxing authorities, once it's stabilized and built, would realize approximately 294,000 of annual tax revenue, whereas the developer's share would be more like 206,000 a year. So there's some more information about the plan in your packet. It is a draft. We will be finalizing it as early as tomorrow and submitting it to the city clerk, but I'm pleased to stand for questions that you may have. If not, I'll, just let me know how I can be helpful.
Okay. Any questions of gentlemen?
On, on the portion of land that is associated with the right-of-way acquisition, how, how was that valued? What's the, I mean, what's the per-square-foot cost, or how was the value set for that portion that's in the right-of-way?
So there, the, the price to buy the ground is, I believe, known in gross, and I think what we likely did was look at the, the area in acres of that being dedicated and just tried to apply that same rate to the, the portion that would consist of right-of-way.
Do we know those areas? Do we know that? Not off the top of my head, I don't know. I mean, there, graphically, you can see where the blue outlines are of the right-of-way. Do we know that it's a reasonable value for land acquisition if the city were acquiring right-of-way? We, we've not done any of that analysis, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Well, it's, I mean, these are details that will get flushed out as we develop the business, at the next step. I mean, we, so now we've asked this question, I'm sure it's going to be answered before our next, we next consider this, so. It's not something we need to know, I don't believe it's, because it's nothing that affects the decision. We're not accepting these numbers. We are accepting that we see a benefit in putting a TIF in this area.
So we're just looking at the district and not the numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, that, that's accurate. I guess just if there's anything that we want to know more about that, that, as opposed to, you know, leading the perception that we've accept, kind of acknowledged and maybe accepted them, you know, maybe now's the time to throw out things that we want to look into a little bit more.
Anyone?
If I may, the preliminary plat and justice, let me speak to that, but it does have all those numbers on it. That's going to the planning commission on Tuesdays, so we can certainly get those to the area of children as far as.
Right-of-way here. Okay. Anyone else wish to address the council during the public hearing portion? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. So now is this later, or do we need to act on this now?
This is also attached, I think, within the staff report, so.
So any discussion or questions about anything we've heard?
Well, I talked to Mike a little bit today about just some questions in, in kind of that same vein, since there's a document that's been in here that's been included, you know, should we make comments on it so that, that we are looking into things further? One of the, just in the financial model, I guess, one of the things that came to mind to me, and I don't, I don't know exactly how to look into this, but, you know, 20-year time horizon, there could be, easily be two economic cycles that occur during that period, and certainly parcels will transact and change hands. So I just think we need to, you know, be conscious of what a, you know, what various scenarios could play out. Certainly, the one painted in here shows it being, being paid off, if you will, earlier than the 20-year time horizon, but certainly economic conditions can change that. But, you know, there's talk about dark store theory going around and ways that properties could be valued now. If somebody, if a future owner of a parcel were to claim dark store theory such that the value was lower than that increment, may not be recognized. Now, that's to the detriment of the developer.
The original developer.
Which is why I asked the question about, you know, taxes will get collected, an increment will get calculated, and money will be paid to somebody. So who is that somebody that now is counting on that increment of revenue to satisfy some cost or probably some, some debt obligation? But I, and I asked Mike, I don't know if there's been any talk about that none of this part, none of this land or none, none of this district should be eligible to any allegation of dark store theory in the future that would derail the appraisal, which would be counter to the developer, but when, once the lands change his hands, then that's a different person who's going to look to reduce their tax obligation and cause a problem with fulfilling the financial obligations of the project. I, I don't know how it's, you know, I just hear that talk, so I don't know what the answer to that is.
Yeah, I don't know how you would mitigate somebody's ability to challenge a, you know, a county appraisal.
I don't know. Can it be writ, can it, can it be written into the agreement? Patrick, is that?
Yeah, Mike had just mentioned that to me this afternoon, and I briefly talked to Kevin about it, but don't have a solid answer.
Might be, yeah, and I don't expect, but it might be something to, to think about as, as we make sure that the thing is viable in the, in the long term, that some, something doesn't derail the ability to pay down the, the costs associated with it.
I just will comment that, you know, I think it's a good thing to help get this developed. Most of my questions that I had and concerns were kind of answered, the more I looked at it, the more I talked to people and got some of the answers on things and reminded myself on how the, the TIF works. And I think some of Kevin's questions are kind of the same way, is just basically when the properties are sold or leased, but, but the tax incentive money increment financing always goes back to the original developer or whoever has the outstanding loan on it for 20 years and what's developed, collected in those 20-year, 20-year period.
Or I guess until it's paid, right?
Until it's paid.
Until that amount is satisfied, it may.
Yeah, so if it's paid earlier.
Be sooner.
All right, if it doesn't get developed and taxes don't get collected, then he doesn't get that money back, or they don't get that money back. So I, you know, I think that's just kind of making it clear to everybody that, that's how I understand it working anyway, so, but, that's all.
All right, thank you. Danny, any?
No, I'm okay.
Kevin?
I'm good. I think it's good.
All right.
Good way to do it.
Well, yeah, I mean, this piece of ground is sat empty since 1995, you know, it would, I, I see a benefit here to making marketable-sized parcels something that can more easily be occupied by some smaller users that might, we might be more likely to attract to our area, so.
Can I ask one more question?
Certainly.
This is maybe getting out of head a little bit.
If you don't get too far out in the way.
Well, it's talking development plans. So when the comment was made about, you know, safety, right, with the interior road, then I presume there will not be any parcel access off of Commerce Drive, since parcel access can be from the adjacent roads, right? So we've got the road in the middle of the lots to the south of Commerce Drive. I presume then that the access will be off of that road and not off of Commerce Drive. Certainly primarily, I think there might be an opportunity for another access, maybe that aligns here with the existing harps. Potentially. But I think, yes, in general, that's probably a good assumption. Yeah, because otherwise, you know, I mean, you've got a bunch of double-fronted lots there that. Yeah. You know, if you're really trying to create safety, then you're going to want to keep the access off of.
That's the idea, right? You would limit, limit conflict points along the main road.
Right. It does. I mean, obviously, these roads are being installed also so that these, there are two lots here instead of just the one long, deep one. I think that's the primary motivator for that. Again, I wouldn't completely rule out another entrance here, you know, but, but it looks like, just at first glance, and I haven't seen the preliminary plat that's coming to the planning commission, but will, that'll be obviously shown on that.
What about the one that's coming in with, for Jake's Fireworks now? Is that?
It's there. Yeah, well.
A drive, an entrance, or is that an actual road that would be a part of this that's developed as a?
Yeah, so.
Full road, or is that already?
When this site plan was developed for Jake's, that's a private drive.
Right.
Now, I think, but it hasn't been constructed yet, obviously, but it could become a public street at some point, if that's the direction somebody wants to go, but, but for now, the way it's planned, the way it's plotted, that's a private drive.
So those costs for those are not in this?
So that's not included in this?
But. Is that, is that correct?
And, and if it's not included, does that mean at some point the people that are developing that now could do their own?
Well, the property is included in this TIF, so we can't have overlapping TIFs.
To understand you much better, if I can get familiar with the.
Because it had its own TIF?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think in the future that Jake's could be. But if that's a private drive, then is there going to be cross-access easements that'll allow free public access off of the end of what appears to be a, a city, of what is a city road? So either that, or, or there'll have to be a cul-de-sac here that turns around. I think that needs to be flushed out in the planning process. For the preliminary plat. That's going to be confusing to. We, we would just assume that'd be a public road corridor.
Mayor, with your permission, I can clarify that.
When we talk about eligible costs for reimbursement, we're really talking about the developer's costs. So if someone else, for example, if Jake's were to put in a drive, the developer's not asking to be reimbursed for that because they didn't incur the expense. And the, the financing mechanism of this typically would be that, you know, the development agreement might permit the developer to sell or lease outlots or parcels, but an assignment of the benefits and burdens of the development agreement is frequently something that the city would want to approve first, so that it doesn't get assigned to whomever. So whereas parcels might sell, the developer under the agreement would likely remain the same unless we ask to assign it and you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So is the Jake's, that property? So is the Jake's, that property included in, it's included in the area?
It's included in the area, so its increment would be inside the district, but the expenses they incur to develop it would not be reimbursed.
Okay.
And they cannot come back for another TIF?
Yeah, I get that part, I just was trying to get in my mind the...
I still think that that, that road has got to be addressed.
So getting, yeah, getting back to that, then...
Because that does appear to be a road.
Yeah, and I guarantee you, we'll wind up plowing snow there, because there's no place to turn the plow around. The intent is that this will become a public, public right-of-way, a public road built to public standards.
It's a cross-access easement, private drive over Jake's.
Currently.
Yeah, currently.
Yeah, as, as Jake's was planned, without any of this other stuff in mind at the time, it's, it was planned with cross-access easement to go on to the east.
All the properties south of Commerce Drive.
All this drive and this...
Bringing access to all properties east of there.
Right. Right. But I think eventually it would make sense if this was public right-of-way. If not, it would remain much like this connection here to the Harps access, that'd be a cross-access.
Well, we would want to avoid a situation where there becomes problems between neighbors and a gate goes up across there.
Right. Right. So the cross, if, if it does remain cross-access easement, we'll need to ensure that all these properties are included as beneficiaries to that easement.
Correct.
Yeah, understood.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Someone wish to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance number 2465, Establishment Reed Development District, as stated.
All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Murdock, second by Councilman Ritter. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 All right, thank you. Okay. Our next item is a proclamation proclaiming Arbor Day in DeSoto on Friday, April 26th. So I will read the proclamation now. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas 2019 is the 147th anniversary of the holiday, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and top, and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautification for our community, and whereas trees, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy, beauty, and spiritual renewal, now I therefore, Rick, no, now therefore I, Rick Walker, Mayor of DeSoto, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 26, 2019, as Arbor Day in the City of DeSoto, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support the efforts to protect our trees, woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And I have another proclamation concerning the National Day of Prayer. All right, whereas, national days of prayer have been a vital part of America's heritage since the first one was declared by the Continental Congress in 1775, and whereas leaders of our great nation have consistently relied upon the power of prayer throughout American history, in 1988, legislation was unanimously ratified by both Houses of Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan, stating that the National Day of Prayer was to be observed on the first Thursday of every May, and whereas the critical challenges facing Americans and the culture at large call for faithful, persevering intercession throughout the year, the American people continue to be plagued with challenges, and our hope lies in humbly seeking the Almighty's guidance, protection, and blessing, and whereas Thursday, May 2, 2019, will commemorate the annual observance of the National Day of Prayer as mandated by both Houses of Congress and by our President in Public Law 100-307, this year will mark the 68th consecutive observance of the National Day of Prayer. Now therefore I, Rick Walker, Mayor of the City of DeSoto, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 2, 2019, as National Day of Prayer in DeSoto, urging all citizens to join together in the community center at 12 noon, and in homes, workplaces, and houses of worship to pray together for you, for the unity of the hearts of all mankind, for peace in our world, and to continue daily in prayer for our city, our great nation, and all the leaders of our world. Our next item is our consent agenda. Tonight on the consent agenda, we have approval of minutes of our council meeting of April 4, and approval of pay ordinance 852.
Mayor, the April 11 minutes were also included in the packet, but not listed on the agenda. Do we need to amend the agenda to indicate that? Do we need an action to do that, or is that just a minute?
Just make a motion, we amend the minutes.
I'll make a motion to amend the consent agenda to include approval of minutes of the council meeting on April 11, 2019.
All in favor? Oh, sorry, Laurie, I cut you off. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose, all right. Now, we can have a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to second, any questions? If not, roll call, please. Yes.
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 Okay. Lana, would you please note that Councilman Ritter is leaving the meeting for item 852A? Thank you, Danny. That's all right. Which is a pay, a pay ordinance.
I make a motion, we approve pay ordinance 852A.
All right, any questions? Discussion, if not, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 All right. Yep. Our next item tonight is Call to Public. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business not listed on tonight's agenda. The comments that are discussed under Call to Public may or may not be acted on by the council during this meeting, there is a four-minute time limit. Please stand and wait to be recognized by the mayor. Anyone wish to address the council tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Old Business, number three, Old Business, we have none, so we will go to number 4A, Receive 2018 Audit Report.
Yes, Council, tonight I'd like to introduce Karen Lynn with Berberich and Treyhan, who performed our annual audit report. Also, I'd like to point out Bonnie Bennett, our finance officer, has made her annual pilgrimage to the council meeting to hear the audit and hear my draft 2020 budget, maybe, if she lasts that long, so, Karen, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, good evening. I also have with me Emily Sheldon in the back, who is the manager and supervisor on this audit, and so she was very involved in the entire process. I'd like to spend a little bit of time on the report to the City Council, you have two documents associated with the audit, one is the financial statements themselves, and then another one entitled the report to the City Council. That report includes certain items related to the audit conclusions that we want to make sure that we share with you, so I'm going to go through that report first. So, if you, I think if the, that's the audit report itself, the other document is the one that I'm going through, so just to clarify that.
Yeah, I'm not sure I uploaded the other one.
Okay, all right, I think, yeah, they have it in front of them.
Yeah, we all have a copy of that, so.
So first, our responsibility is to perform the audit in accordance with generally-accepted auditing standards. Those standards require that we plan and perform the audit with the objective of forming a conclusion as to whether the financial statements are free of material misstatement, and so we design our, our audit with that objective in mind. We also do perform the audit in accordance with the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide, which is the guide that the state of Kansas puts forth for, for us to follow for certain statutory compliance and other items that they want us to review as a part of the audit. All of those items require that we look at documentation for financial statement amounts, for footnote disclosure amounts, we look at internal control and, and do a review of that. We also look at accounting policies to make sure that every, that all of the policies are consistently applied and, and are appropriate in, in all the circumstances. If there are any significant or unusual transactions, we would pay particular attention to those, to make sure that there's nothing unusual or inconsistently applied related to those transactions. If there was anything in any of those areas that I've mentioned, where there is something unusual, or something that came to our attention that we believe should be brought to your attention, we would do so and let you know about that. There was nothing unusual, or anything that was inconsistently applied that we would need to bring to your attention. We also did issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements in accordance with the regulatory basis, which is the basis that the state of Kansas allows municipalities to use instead of generally-accepted accounting principles, so that unmodified opinion is the highest form of opinion that can be given to a set of financial statements. We did have a couple of adjusting entries that we made part of the audit process, they're the last pages in this packet. They're really very standard, ordinary, adjusting entries that are made to get from the way that the, the city records certain transactions to the way they're presented here in the audit report. So all of those adjusting entries are normal, and really nothing out of the ordinary for, for you to be alarmed about. Other things we would bring to your attention, if there were any disagreements, any issues in the audit process, any, for example, information that we requested that wasn't provided to us, or things like that, we would make sure to have brought that to your attention at the time that it, that we became aware of anything like that. Situations like that, difficulties or disagreements could be red flags of more serious issues, and we would want to make sure that you were aware of those, as soon as they became, as soon as we became aware of them. Throughout the audit process, there was nothing at all in any category like that that would indicate any red flags, we had great cooperation from, from Bonnie and the, all the team members, we were provided all the information we requested, and the audit went very smoothly, so we want to make sure to convey that to you as well. The last item in this packet that I want to bring to your attention is the, the letter that is on the city's letterhead. This is required by our audit standards, certain things that we talk about during the audit process, underlying the financial statements and those policies are required by our standards to be put in writing in a letter to us. The, the signing of this letter is indication to us that the, that the financial statement is approved for final, and then we use the date that the letter is signed as the date on our audit opinion in the financial statements. We do encourage you to read through the information in this letter, there's a lot in there that can help you as you read through the financials, and to digest and understand the financial statements, so we do encourage you to take a few moments to read through that letter. The, I believe the, the original, the original report that was presented was a draft, and has subsequently been finalized, and there were no changes, there was a little bit more information provided on the subsequent event about the bond issue, but other than that, there were no changes from the draft that had previously been presented. So we, we also would report that there were no deficiencies, significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that needed to be reported, so with that, I would open for any questions that anyone might have.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So our action, then, is to accept the audit?
Receive the audit.
Receive the audit. Someone wish to make a motion that we receive the audit?
I'll make a motion to receive the audit report as submitted.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion to second, any discussion? Not, roll call, please. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Bonnie.
And good job, Mike, for running a tight ship.
Well, you know, that's as much Bonnie as me, that's for sure, I really appreciate the work she does. This is, you know, we get used to these audits, you know, coming, coming back clean like this, it's, it's really, I mean, in my opinion, it's the most important thing we do, is, is steward the public funds like this, and we'll start talking about the budget for next year here later in the, in the night, in the evening. Bonnie is as on top of these things as, as anybody could possibly be, just top of mind, I'll ask her some obscure question about some silly fund from five years ago, she'll remember what we did, so, I mean, I just really appreciate the work she does, and you don't see her much, but I see her every day, and, you know, really want to extend all the credit to Bonnie that possibly can.
All right, thank you, Bonnie. Item 4B, Consider Zoning Change for Commerce Drive Parcels.
All right, thank you, Councilman Mayor, we've got another riveting item on your agenda tonight, we've, all us local government geeks, we've gone through TIFs, audits, we had a rezoning and, and a budget after this, so, all in one night, what more could you ask for? Before you have, is it rezoning for seven tracts of property on Commerce Drive, it's very similar to what you did approve for Jake's Fireworks, of course, this is part of the, the rest of the properties that are east of Jake's and east of Harps, as they wrap around on Commerce Drive, so, the applicant is here tonight, Travis Hicks, who's representing Quarter 10 Commerce Park, of course, we went through our standard process, the application was actually received in February for the zoning change from M1 to C2. The current zoning map is included in your council packet, and that aerial photo of the tracts is included on page three. Of course, we sent out the notification letters to nearby residents for the public hearing, also posted a sign for the, the public hearing for the March 26 Planning Commission meeting. I'm going to go through the staff report and some of the findings, once again, this is very similar to the items that are the staff comments for the, you receive from Jake's, it's just a, a larger area of property, as, as I said, there's seven tracts as far as this rezoning goes. The character of the neighborhood, the changing zoning will be appropriate for commercial retail, as you can see, it's, it's changing, that Commerce Drive has really turned into a commercial corridor, it was originally zoned M1 light industrial, but it's really become a, a commercial area for the city of DeSoto. The proposed zoning is consistent, certainly with the surrounding zoning with the Jake's Fireworks, and also the Harps across the street. Could the tract be put to use on the existing M1 zoning category for commercial uses? It could be, but it would require a special use permit, so this certainly gives the developer more flexibility versus coming to the council, going through the public hearing process, and being able to request a singular type use, if that use ever was to be changed, or they had a different potential tenant for that property, they'd have to go back through the special use permit process. I've attached, as part of your staff report, the zoning districts, the, the primary zoning districts for the C2 district, and you can kind of compare them to the M1, that there's certainly a lot more flexibility being a C2 district versus an M1 for commercial use. The site has been vacant since it was annexed into the city of DeSoto, also the extent which there's a need in the community for use is allowed by this proposed zoning, certainly we're getting a lot of residential use, there'll be some additional apartments being built in DeSoto, so, commercial, having commercial outlets for the additional residents for the city is a positive thing. Public services, including police, fire, and parks, and schools won't see any previous, or any changes from the previous conditions, parking will not be allowed on Commerce Drive, from the previous conditions. Parking will not be allowed on Commerce Drive. All parking will be on-site. Don't see any negative impacts from changing the zoning from M1 to C2 on the environment. Allowing uses that do not currently exist and will provide additional economic activities, part of this whole process with the TIF. There's no anticipated detrimental effect on nearby properties, and staff has determined there'd be a little gain to adjacent neighborhoods or the public in denying the change in zoning application. Overall, the proposed use is consistent with the future land use plan, and recommendation certainly by professional staff is positive in favor of granting the rezoning request. The Planning Commission concurred and, of course, recommends to the city council that the zoning change be approved. Then, I will stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? Hearing done. Soon we're ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation for zone change and enact the zone change request from M1 Light Industrial to C2 Business General for those seven tracts of land in Quarter Ten Commerce Park as indicated on the exhibits included in the report.
Ordinance number 2466, council.
Okay. All right. We have a motion by Councilman Honna Michael. A second by Councilman Lane. Any discussion of the motion? Not? Roll call, please.
Murdock?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Honna Michael?
Yes.
I get a vote, don't I?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I say yes.
You've got to take the chances when you get them.
That's right. All right. 4C, consider donation application from Cal Valley Sportsmen's Association.
Yes, council. You'll remember this from last year. In our general fund budget, we have allocation set aside for charitable donations for local civic organizations. In addition to the application from the Sportsmen's Association, this week I got an application from the DeSoto Alumni Association for $1,000 for scholarships and for the reunion. If you're comfortable considering that application tonight, I invite you to do that. I didn't have time to put it in the packets, but I figured rather than having, that you might want to review that as well this evening, rather than having this again on the agenda for the next meeting. Regardless of that application, the application for the Sportsman Association was in your packet. We do have, our donations policy was attached to the staff report. Essentially, the purposes for eligible applications are civic organizations, maximum amount is $1,000. In the staff report, I've included allocations that happened last year. This is our first application so far in 2019. There's $10,000 in this line item. There are a few specific set-asides, so 43, 80 of that $10,000 is in our budget narrative as specifically set aside for these items listed here: United Community Services, Johnson County Human Services, Beautification Awards, and the Council of Mayor's Dinner. So, it's $4,300 in set-asides there. Previously approved, this was the chart from 2018, but we've historically had this application from the Cal Valley Sportsmen's for their fishing derby. That's been going on, I think, I don't know how many years.
Two years.
Yeah, well, the derby's been 42 years. I know we've granted the donation for at least five or 10.
Well, that's probably as long as I've been on the council. I think we did it the first year I was on it. So, I don't, that's been a long time.
Right. So, I'll leave that one at that. The request is for $1,000, and the amount is at the discretion of the council. It does take a motion from the council to do that.
I just, this brings out a lot of young people. I mean, I don't know, you'd probably get 100, over 100 kids participating in this. So, I think this is a good way for us to partner with someone that's going to sponsor an event that is obviously popular in the community. So, I would encourage us to continue to support it.
I'll make a motion. We grant the Cal Valley Sportsman Association $1,000.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? If not, roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Honna Michael? Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock? Yes.
All right. Thank you. Regarding the Alumni Association application, what are your thoughts? Would you rather take that up at the next meeting after we've had time to review the application? Or are you comfortable discussing it tonight? Any thoughts?
I'm comfortable with discussing it.
Lori?
Yeah, specifically, the application is to the Alumni Association. Patsy Allen Brand is the contact on that. The description of the purpose is to provide scholarships to seniors. So, each year, they'll take applications from seniors for scholarships. I don't know how much they break those out and how much per scholarship is awarded. They also indicate to promote DeSoto alumni on a local basis. This activity serves graduates in their 90s as well as current graduates. So, that's the application form that came in. And I do think that they, you know, meet the criteria of a local civic organization. They're eligible.
Yeah. I know. They hold events to secure funds on their own for their scholarship fund. My only thought, I mean, just from a personal observation, if we were donating to a scholarship fund, maybe we should have a city of DeSoto Scholarship Fund that we would fund, but as an aside.
Well, yeah, I was going to. I mean, I don't mind doing it, but it's like.
Exactly. Then we would have to decide how to distribute the money. So, that's a whole nother can of work. So, maybe this is the easiest and simplest way to. I do applaud the efforts, you know. I think it's important to support our local high school kids, and this is a way to do that.
Mike, what did you say in the application? Something about the 90s in their?
A person in their 90s.
Yeah. Serves graduates in their 90s as well as current. So, all age groups, I guess.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how. I guess it saves them from, I don't know. I don't know what it does for the 90s, but.
I'll make a motion. We approve the application from the DeSoto Alumni Association for that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? If not, roll call, please.
Murdock?
Yes.
Honna Michael?
Yes.
Lane? Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Let's see. Oh, no, we've got to do this budget thing.
We've got to do the budget thing. I wish we didn't.
All right. Discuss 2020 budget.
Okay. Well, you know it's serious when I get up and I move toward the podium. I'll apologize in advance. I do have a PowerPoint here. I'm going to hand out the, these are just the slides for the PowerPoint. I don't think there's any information in the PowerPoint that isn't in your staff report, just in a little better format. Some graphics here. I did upload a PDF of these slides to the Google Drive. If you have a device there, you can follow along with that. I always clear, this happens every year.
Every time it starts.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. So, yeah, the 2020 budget, our calendar, we'll get to our calendar at the very last slide, so bear with me. I'm going to try and keep this under 20 minutes or so here. With ample time for questions and back and forth, stop me anytime you want to discuss anything. Was that what you wanted to hear? Oh, stop now? No, only stop to discuss something. Don't stop to end the presentation. The budget calendar has the draft budget being submitted to you this evening with the intent of essentially formulating the bulk of an approved budget by early June in the event that we have to have a public vote regarding increase to the mill levy. So, that's why when the tax-led legislation came down several years ago, we rolled up our budget timeframe by a couple of months. And so, this is, April is, I feel like a tax accountant. April is kind of my budget spreadsheet hell month where I lock myself in my office and I'm grumpy to my coworkers. I'll apologize for that. The first slide here, the budget that you have in front of you, was in your packets, represents a level mill levy. So, the proposal as you have it, and we'll go through what's included and what's not as I step through the presentation. But, what you have in front of you is essentially a mill levy holding steady from 2019. So, this chart here on slide two just shows mill levies from 2017. We're at 27 mills. We knocked down to 25.3 in 2018. 2019's 24.3, and it looks like 2020, if the draft's in front of you, would be the same. So, this chart just shows the components of the mill levy for those years. For in the 2020 budget, general fund mill levy's about 14.3. For the law enforcement, about 5.85. And for debt service is 4.2. Those are the three components of our total mill of 24.381. That's kind of the punchline, getting to the bottom line with the first slide. But, so now, we'll step through and show you kind of how we got there. I think we reported before the results of the county appraiser office. He gave it to the mayor and myself in March. Total valuations in terms of the real property assessments that the county is in charge of establishing a value to went from about $70 million in 2019 up to about $73.4 million. Now, this is assessed property valuations. In addition to that, we have items that are assessed by the state. So, personal property and utility evaluations are assessed by the state. We don't get those until almost, I think it's late May. Those come down from the state. So, those are still estimates at this time to come up with a total valuation of just under $81 million. That's the number we plug in that I've arrived at this mill levy for that's in your draft budget. Still an estimate at this time. Last year, it went down by a percent or two between this time and when we actually got the final numbers in from the state. And actually, the county number is still an estimated two, but it usually doesn't change much. So, that's the total valuation. You can see that it's had just a steady increase over the last several years. It's important, the percentages are important here. So, assessed valuation increases include just increased property values from reassessments of existing property. They also include new construction. And the new construction amount, the new growth amount's important to us because it relates directly to the tax lid and the amount of ad verum tax we can levy. This year, the new growth rate was 3.85%. So, DeSoto essentially, new building in DeSoto from 2018 to 2019 increased by 3.85%. That factors into the tax lid calculation, which is shown on slide four here. The tax lid is based on what you collected last year plus an inflationary factor that's established by the state. This year, it's 1.5% plus the new growth figure that I've just talked about. So, the maximum tax collection for 2020 without a vote would be 1.16 million. So, I just rounded it down to an even 1.16 million, and that's the number that I've plugged in as an ad verum revenue in the general fund for 2020. That's just the general fund. The debt service fund and the law enforcement fund are not subject to the property tax lid. So, you don't have to go through this calculation for those two. When we're looking at crafting yearly budgets, we don't just do it on a yearly basis. We do it looking out five years. This chart here looks out and back five years. The red bars are general fund end-of-year balances. So, you see this big peak in 2018. Last year at this time, we were having this discussion about windfall revenues, and we got half a million dollars from the sale of Cherokee Woods, and the sales tax was just going crazy. And these bars projecting out were just hitting the sky. So, we decided we need to put some of that money to work in 2019 budget, which is what we've done. So, you see this end-of-year tax collection ticking down in 2019. From here on out, these projections are essentially based on the full use of all the allocated funds within the proposed budgets. So, you see they come to a leveling off in the out-years of the projections. The important line here, this yellow line, is our percentage of the year-end fund balance as a percentage of operating revenue. And you know from our financial policy, we want to keep that right around 30%. A whole lot higher, and you run the risk of collecting taxes that you're not spending. I mean, we don't want to do that. Too much lower, and, you know, the fiscal management becomes into question. So, you do want to have that 30% reserve. So, this is kind of the line we shoot for and sort of the line that I try to base those projections on. So, that's on the general fund year-ending balances. We've had a lot of discussion about these sales tax projections, you know, that skyrocketed in 2017, 2018. So far, I think I've reported to you, 2019, those look like they're leveling off. We're not seeing the double-digit increase. So, what we did a couple of years ago is engage our financial advisors for some advice as to these projections here. This is the culmination of that advice, and we're just carrying it forward to this year. You can see anything, 2018 and before are the audited figures. So, we did get the audit in time for me to incorporate it into the draft budgets that you have tonight. So, the sales tax collections was almost 1.8 million or 1.77 million in 2018. This chart shows the 2019 budgeted figure of 1.605. So, when I say the sales tax is leveled off, you know, if it's just, if it just remains level, we're going to be up here closer to 1.7. But, for the purposes of this chart, where I'm showing the budgeted figure of 1.6, and then the 2020 budget has a figure of 1.7. So, that's that dot right there. And you can see lower, you know, the out-years, more modest increases in sales tax. So, that's the sales tax revenue that you have in your budget. This chart represents the total general fund revenue picture. So, 2018, you can see, again, the windfall revenues, the mustard color is property tax, and you can see how that bar is so much higher than the others. That's because of that half million dollars Cherokee Woods, a delinquent tax we received in that year. 2019, the total property tax is about 1.2. What you have in your budget there is just slightly more than that 1.2 million. The blue bar there is 1.7 million. There's a sales tax number. So, property and sales tax represents, I don't know, three quarters of our revenues. And then, the others are things like franchise fees and other fees, other building permits, things like that. So, you see the total revenue projection picture for 2019. This is the budgeted number, and 2020 just steps up slightly from that amount. Another thing, when we're looking at projections into the future, is this dollar amount called unexpended appropriations. In the past, and I think we probably need to continue the practice, within each line item that we have allocations for in the general fund, or in the water, or in the sewer fund, each line item has a bit of a built-in contingency factor to it. There's an aversion of department heads in the city to go over any particular line item on their budget. That's great. I mean, that's admirable. I want them to keep thinking that way. But, as a result, over the years, we've built in a little buffer there for each line item. So, when you look at the end of the year, we, almost every department is under what their budgeted allocation was. And this chart kind of shows, just within the general fund, all the general funds combined, just how much under the budget the allocations actually were. And you can see, the 2019 is still a projected, but 15 through 18, you know, three of those years, we had unexpended appropriations, more than $200,000. And that's significant when you look at the budget. $200,000. And that's significant when you look at the budget, the total 2020 budgeted revenues and compare them to the budgeted allocations. So our overall revenues were about 4.3 million in the draft budget. The total appropriations is up around 5.3 million. Now, keep in mind, we have a $750,000 contingency in that amount that we've talked about the contingency. We don't anticipate spending that, but it's a budget to zero sort of concept. So when you take the contingency out, you have a net allocation of about 4.5 million. That gives a difference of 235,000. Looks like we're budgeting to lose, you know, 235,000 in the general fund. And some of those projections, as you see, they were stepping down in that chart before, kind of reflect that. But in reality, well, I have here, for the last five years, the unexpended appropriations have exceeded 200,000. So essentially, I think what we can expect when we get to the end of year 2020 is that we have a level budget. You know, it's a level mill levy. Revenues will essentially match expenditures and the end result for the general fund balance will be zero. But it's just a matter of those conservative revenue estimates, I think, and also conservative budget allocations that show, that show up in that amount, that way.
So Mike, is there a relationship between unexpended general funds, which run about $250,000 or $300,000 a year, and the increase in the year, end of year fund, end of year general fund balance? Is that cash accumulation, it's unspent money?
No, no. These year, end of year general fund balances assume for 2020, I'm assuming only $75,000 of unexpended appropriation.
But for years prior, so if you look back, say 2015 had about a $300,000.
That's part of that, that's part of that 800,000.
But from year to year, is it growing by that amount? So for 2016, 2015 to 2016, it showed a general fund unexpended amount of about 300,000, but the end of year balance didn't grow. What's the relationship between unexpended appropriations and end of year cash?
Well, I mean, any budgeted amount that we didn't spend, obviously, those do add to the, no, I would say in 2016, and even years before that, even 2017, actually, our budgeted revenues were about $400,000 less than our budgeted expenditures. And part of that, so there's, that's the difference. You're not seeing a one-to-one. That's why.
Right. You don't have all the numbers right here.
Got it.
Yeah, that's why it's not a one-to-one addition. But it's important to kind of get a handle for that. Because I don't want to just cut those line item budgets down to no, you know, no buffer in there. But at the same time, you do, we do need to recognize that we don't ever spend at all. And so you don't want to just project, you know, doom and gloom. You know, you want to be as accurate as you can with your projections. So that's why it's not a one-to-one. Okay, I'm going to talk a little bit about the appropriation highlights. So in the general fund, these are, I kind of want to bring to your attention some of these line items that aren't just the regular stuff from every year from the past 20. The first one is the contingency, the budget to zero, $750,000. We started doing this several years ago to essentially budget all of, not all, but the majority of what we expect to have as a year-end balance, budget that as an allocation so that, you know, in the event something occurs during the year, we can, we can be responsive to that and have that in reserve from a budget standpoint, even though policy-wise, we don't, we don't intend on spending that. Also, throughout the budget in the general fund, and this also carries over to the water and sewer funds, of budgeting an increase of 4% increase in wages. That'll include a 1.5% cost of living. The rest of that will be merit. Item three, health insurance. I think I've, I think I've mentioned before, we heard from our health insurance provider, we've got a 23% increase and that starts this year. So that 23% increase is also included in the 2020 budget. We've done some poking around on that. And, you know, we're hearing from other cities with our, well, and from other insurance brokers, that with our history, recent history, we're not likely to do a whole lot better on the open market as a new customer, anyway. So we're just taking the hit, swallow hard and deal with that. It's in the budget. The fourth item is an increase in the economic development allocations. The 2019 budget has 55,000, upping that to 90,000 in the proposed budget. I know we're having a retreat with the EDC and some leadership there at the start of May to talk about the structure, format of that position. I know the council wants to make a more, more investment on the economic development side. So this would be a way that we can budget those funds in case there's structural changes. You know, we want to, we want to have a full-time EDC position instead of a part-time EDC position. This will allow us flexibility to do that. So that's included in the budget. Also included in the general fund is a part-time communication and outreach position. This is the whole information online and in person. $40,000 for that. I think that's, that's plenty for a part-time position. It does not, however, include any additional person for recreation programming in the parks department. I know that was something else we talked about doing. Just wasn't able to do that and hold the mill levy level. So I think if we want to, if we want to discuss that further, that's probably a discussion that needs a little more time to incubate with the parks department, or with the park board. And ultimately, we'll probably have to offset the cost of the new position with some, some fees for admissions to new programs, you know, some revenue stream. We've also got on the budget, $15,000 for a new computer server here at city hall. I've included $20,000 to continue the summer concert series for 2020. And we're continuing our vehicle equipment replacement program. The budget impact of the general fund is $60,233. That includes a new pickup, a backhoe, and a dump truck in the street department, and three utility trucks in the water department. In addition to that, the community center and the pool fund, there's $35,000 for the community center to replace the boiler room roof and some electric and door upgrades. And there's 25,000 thrown in to replace or refurbish the deck chairs in the pool. These allocations could be the first year of the building maintenance fund concepts that we've talked about, you know, for all of our, for all of our bigger facilities. You know, we have direct plans for this money for 2020, but I think it'd be a good opportunity to create those separate funds, put this money in there and start budgeting those long-term. In terms of this building, the community center, in that, in that master plan, we came up with a figure somewhere around 50, $55,000 per year as a building maintenance fund to take care of this. This doesn't get us there. The pool, 25,000, it might, we haven't really done that analysis on the pool. But I think these are great placeholders and I, and I would like in the crafting of the final budget to have this money go into the specifically allocated funds that we will create. In the street department, we've increased the road maintenance program from 400,000 to 450,000 and increased the asphalt budget by 15,000. I think we talked when Brad submitted our plan for this year, gosh, is 400,000 enough? And the answer is no. We've, five years ago, we did a kind of a comprehensive look at that and looked at that time like it's 750,000 a year was what it kind of take to preserve. We haven't redone that analysis and this doesn't really get us there. I'm fully in support of a fully funded road maintenance program. But if we're going to do that, it's going to take a mill levy increase. I mean, you know, or another funding source. But this does take a step in that direction. So it's a pretty significant increase, 50,000 plus 15,000 in the asphalt.
Is it safe to say that as the city grows and our income from the taxes continues to rise, that this is a good place for that to continue to grow as that grows without having to necessarily do it?
Yeah.
Increase all at one time?
You could argue that the $50,000 here is sort of part of that. You know, we're kind of, because we had 3% growth last year and the sales tax is growing. So this is that sort of an incremental thing. But as we grow, we get more streets. And so you kind of need, at some point-
The number's always going to go higher that we need.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I mean, it is a step in that direction. And you know, if, if, if we see sales tax keep coming on, you know, we get, Commerce Park builds out with, with sales tax generating things and we see our revenues, we get more comfortable projecting our revenues, we could, next year, we could do 750,000 next year, but you can't do that for the next five and still have a general fund balance. So it's really those out-year projections that we kind of need to be looking at. So as we get more comfortable with higher projections there, there's an opportunity to increase this. Yeah. In terms of the capital improvement fund and capital improvement plan, I'll remind you, we never really formally revised or adopted the new capital improvement plan. We did have those discussions. We adjusted revenues. We adjusted projects. We added, added some. But I, we never came back and formally approved that plan. So that's, that's in the works for the rest of this budget discussion. But the draft, the most recent draft we were working on in terms of 2020, has 1.7 million in revenues and a lot of those, about a million of those are transfers from special highway, from the general fund, from some other funds. But it would also include $750,000 in new debt. Projects for 2020 include a couple of design projects, Miller Park drainage, design of 95th Street sewer extension. And again, that's sort of a placeholder. I think we've talked about those sewer extensions being more driven by development pressures than just by just going up and building something. We'll also be designing, designing the roundabout at 91st and Lexington. Couple of project, projects, annual sidewalk replacement program and the city hall improvements. The asbestos removal and the security improvements here at city hall. That's capital improvement. Talk a little about the debt service fund. You might remember this, this chart from years past. Our financial advisors always give this, give us this at the end of the year. It shows all the outstanding debt and those debt payments going out into the future. This doesn't include the bond issue that we just got done, done with. That'll be in next year's. But essentially, what you can see for the next several years, pretty level debt service payments. This is a chart of the debt service fund in general. It's got 2018, 2019, and then 2020. I'm proposing, and then you can see the fund balance going forward, I'm proposing a slight reduction in the debt mill for this year in the 2020 budget. If you look in 2021, the mill levy shoots up to 6.5. This is because within our CIP in 2021, we've got 3.5 million dollars in new debt in that year. Also, there's new debt in 2023. So you see another uptick in that. These mill increases, you know, 3 million of that would be a bond referendum from, for a Parks and Rec thing. Another couple of million is still in the CIP for a public works facility. That's, that would be the next, the next bump up in 2022, 23. So those are still in there. We know that's in flux, but this is what that mill rate would have to do, would have to look like if that happens. So you can see that about two of that would be a voter-approved mill, which, which makes us feel a little better about that increase. Law enforcement fund, this one's pretty stable for 2020. I labeled the wrong ones here. The 2020 budget had, oops, sorry. Law enforcement, we typically have, you know, $50,000 fund balance in that one. We really just collect the property tax and that goes to fund our sheriff's contract. Haven't gotten the final number from the sheriff's yet. The draft budget includes a 2% increase in the sheriff's contract. My mill rate for the sheriff's contract, I labeled the wrong ones, but I'm also projecting a slight decrease in that as well. So from 2019, in the law enforcement, 5.997, just under 6%, reducing that down to 5.85%. With the, with the law enforcement fund, there's, there's really not a reason to have a big ongoing fund balance. So we're just kind of tweaking that mill levy to keep the fund balances level. Did want to talk a little bit about the electric reserve fund and the vehicle replacement program impact on that fund. You'll know, you remember with the vehicle and equipment replacement, these utility trucks that we're going to buy next year and the dump truck that's in the budget will be funded directly from the electric reserve. So those will be lump sum payments. We'll buy those things and then the, the general fund will be paying that back over time. And the water fund will be paying it back as well. So this, the red bars show projecting out fund balances in the electric reserve fund. You can see, you know, in the out years, we're going to be, you know, somewhere around 1.2, 1.3 million dollars moving forward. The 2020 proposed budget amount, this is what, this is, the yellow line is the expenditures. So we're going to be spending, you know, 130, 140,000 next year. And then the blue lines are the revenue streams that come back to the electric reserve fund from the other funds. So it's kind of a crazy, we got a crazy bump next year that I'm not sure that will happen. That's just what's in the, what's in the program right now. Each year, we look at that. We'll probably be moving some of those things a little further out. But you can see that, you know, the intent is for the health of the fund. And again, we borrow at a rate that's lower than what we could borrow for on the market, but higher than what we can get from our investments at that fund. So we'll move to the enterprise funds. The water fund, proposed revenues of 1.76 million, proposed appropriations 1.97, difference of 210,000. But again, unexpended appropriations there are about 190,000 over the last five years. So within the projections, we're assuming 50,000 in unexpended appropriations. Water fund allocation highlights, the 2019 is projected to end the year at 1.2 million. That's 71% of operating revenue. That's quite a bit. So that fund is doing, doing very well. I'm proposing therefore to increase a transfer from the, to the general fund from 40,000 to 80,000. This practice was started in 2014, and this is one of those things, I didn't know why. So I asked Bonnie and she said, oh, that's to compensate for the administrative time for people at city hall who aren't in the water department but work on water department stuff. So that was done 2014 at 40,000 and hasn't been adjusted since. So I haven't done a detailed analysis on how much time people spend here and there and well, that. My guess, if I did that, I'd come up with something more than 80,000. So I'm proposing to double that transfer back to the general fund, up to 80,000. We've also have budgeted for a water maintenance fund. So this is that building fund we've talked about, 45,000 per year. I think that will get us a long way. And certainly, fully funding a building preservation, building maintenance funds for the, for the plant itself, and maybe even start to look at the distribution system from an asset management standpoint. We haven't really done that in the past, but I think, I think that will, that would be a good start. The water fund also has adding one full-time equivalent or full-time employee. This will be actually a control system kind of foreman, maintenance position that would be just under the water department foreman. Actually, in practice, what happened this year, we did have to let a water distribution employee go for poor performance. And we were looking to replace that position when a candidate came along with, with all the skills that we would need for, for the maintenance technician position. So we went ahead and hired him at a little higher rate. And we'll be backfilling actually the water distribution position for next year. In terms of the water rate, the budget shows just an inflationary increase in the water rate of 1.8%. Like we do every year, we'll keep an eye on the fund health throughout the end of the year and determine whether or not to do that at the end, toward the end of the year, implement that in January if we need to. This is the look at the water fund year-end, year-end balances. Again, the yellow line is a percentage of operating expenses. You can see the target here is, you know, somewhere around 30, 35%. So you can see that 2018- So you can see that 2018 is peak, 2019, these are projected numbers, and then the 2020 budget, uh, end of, end of, it's still above a million dollars. Similarly, with the sewer fund then, uh, proposed revenue 701,000, appropriations at 712, unexpended appropriations at 11,000. We've averaged about 50,000 in unexpended appropriations over the last several years in the sewer fund. Uh, nothing new or exciting really to point to in the sewer fund allocations, but this is the long-term projections on that. Uh, fund balance, again, everything's over 30%, so it's looking pretty healthy. And then, I think this is the last page, this is an overall look at the overall 2020 budget, uh, this is on the allocation side, so 4.6 million in the general fund, the next biggest one's water at 1.9, then debt service 1.5, sewer capital improvements and law enforcement. That's kind of the whole picture of the budget that's in front of you. So in terms of policy discussion, moving from tonight, moving forward, uh, you know, the things that I, I like to bring to your attention, um, are listed here on these last two slides, last few slides. Mill levy again is, is level, uh, wage increase 4%, uh, we're increasing our economic development allocations, we're adding a part-time position for a communications and outreach person, we're adding a part, a full-time position in the water department, we're continuing with our vehicle equipment and replacement program, uh, we've increased the road maintenance funding, 50,000 in asphalt for, uh, 15,000. We will be establishing building preservation funds for the community center, for the pool, and also in the water and sewer departments as well. We're gonna be increasing the transfer to the general fund from the water fund from 40 to 80,000. We have our 750,000 contingency item, uh, in the general fund budget, and water and sewer rates projecting just inflationary increases, which we will reevaluate toward the end of the year. So here we are on our timeline, today's April 18th, we have the next month or so, uh, to discuss, modify, revise, we can even have workshops, um, determine the need for a special election by June 6th, and then the actual budget isn't due to the county until August 23rd. So, that was half an hour. Sorry. I'm done though. If you want to discuss any of that, or can answer any questions?
Questions from council for Mike.
Not received.
But be warned, okay.
Warn you ahead of time.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
All right.
Yep.
I like it when you make it real easy for us.
It's all there.
You all stayed awake, I was glad for that. We didn't have to turn off lights, I think, with the new projector, not having to turn off lights.
That helps a little bit.
Well, the screen is a lot bigger.
I can see.
So I can.
Okay, good.
All right, moving on, then if we're ready, executive session, we have no items, or do we?
Yeah, could we have 10?
Okay.
10 minutes.
Sure. Land acquisition. All right.
I'd like to make a motion, we go into executive session for 10 minutes discussing blah, 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 land acquisition, I don't know what the numbers are, Patrick.
Yeah, Lana, do you have the template there?
If you have it, just, you got it?
I didn't warn you.
No, I shouldn't.
Going in at 8:35 and returning at 8:45.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will be back.
Yeah, I can't remember what the KSA.
Lana, it's the exact same for the public works. That's a special meeting.
Hey, it's good to see you.
How are you?
I'm doing great. Are you down for a while, or?
Uh, for about the next 10 minutes.
Oh, okay. Well, it's good to see you. Thanks for making it tonight.
Yeah.
I have 8:43, so we have a couple minutes to wait.
I want two people watching.
Tell me to turn this on and say one on Sarah.
Hi, Sarah.
Is it?
I guess.
Comments enabled, I don't see anybody commenting.
Phone isn't buzzing, so she must have listened.
She wasn't feeling well, I think she went to bed. Two this morning, four.
The Royals are up, 6 to 1, 3 to 2, two outs in the bottom of the ninth.
How much? 6-3?
6 to 1.
Oh.
Two outs and a full count.
Who are they playing?
Yankees, one more minute.
Two pitch.
I don't remember.
Couple, uh, nah, just one, I guess.
It's gonna bring up the KDA, ramp closing.
Hmm.
It is an issue.
I know.
It's gonna cost some brown.
I think I, I think I stoned before I went down there.
Well, I think for now, they're done closing ramps.
Well, they'll, they'll have to do the Westboro ones. I'm not sure if they're gonna do that.
All right, I got 8:45. We are back in regular session. Carrying on, advisory reports, city administrator.
Uh, no report this evening, thank you.
Okay. City attorney.
Ditto for me.
All right. City planner.
This is, you know, the preliminary plan is on the planning mission. First, we started our state repairs and, uh, the budget's gonna be next.
Okay, thank you, Brad. City clerk.
Nothing further, mayor.
All right, well Danny, we'll just start with you on that end.
Nothing, mayor, thank you.
Kevin?
I spoke to Mike about a couple issues with, uh, some of the contractors working out on the streets, not wearing vests and enough signage, so he's gonna talk to a couple of those contractors, just to let the rest of council know. And then, uh, um, I asked, also asked Mike to get some extra patrol since our police officer left. Um, on Waverly, we have some heavy dump truck traffic that seems to be excessively speeding, so, uh, quite concerned with some of that.
Do we know, what is that?
They must be going down to 101st or so, then two homes, they're down there, but...
There's been a lot of...
Strictly guessing, yeah, there's, there's probably 50, 60 trucks a day at least, or more. So if you're bidding that project, I would wait for a while, because they're using it.
Okay.
It's all hope.
All right, thank you. Lori?
I don't have anything. I was gonna ask Bob all about what the fire district is doing, but he left, so I'll have to wait till next time he comes.
All right.
I'm good.
Kevin?
I feel bad about having something to report now, dragged me out a little bit, but I did want to say I went to the broadband community summit in Austin last week, uh, Monday through Thursday, I was there with Mike Bosch from RG Fiber, at least they were there for a couple of days. Uh, just kind of, kind of some observations on, on community broadband. Our situation is a, was a very, very common thing, it was probably 1,200, 1,500 people, something like that, a lot of municipalities and, uh, rural electric co-ops, which are getting into the fiber optic broadband business to serve their customers. Lots of under, lots of unserved and underserved needs, uh, not just in rural areas, but like us, fringe suburbs that are, are not in a dense enough area to, um, to get, garner the need of the big companies. Lot of the same things, education, uh, commerce, economic development were, were echoed over and over. A couple of communities had done surveys, um, of people around their area to, to look at, at the effect of broadband, and in two different ones, the numbers are coming back and about 25% of people would report that they would move for better broadband service. So if you're in an unserved area, that's a problem, or a limited service area, that's a problem. If you've got great service, that's something to take advantage of, so that's something for us to think about in terms of, of a hype that we can create. One of the communities, um, uh, in Illinois was saying that they, um, used some targeted online advertising such that if somebody uses Willow to, to look at a property in their zip code, that they would get a banner ad that would promote, um, their gigabit services within their community, because they know that that's, that people are highly elastic relative to broadband capacity, so fairly cheap, fairly easy to do, but just some ways to, to promote the community. A lot to talk about, don't just, don't let it just happen, uh, without talking about it, and we got an opportunity where we've got an event we're changing, and one way you draw attention to ourselves, because what, you didn't have it before and now you do, whereas Shawnee and some of our surrounding communities do, but we've got a changing dynamic in our community, so it's something that we want to take advantage of that event, this change, and promote it. Um, another reason I would be, be real supportive of, uh, somebody in communications, somebody that's doing communications for us. Find our story to tell, tell how it's being applied, you know, I think if we've got somebody online now on RG Fiber, it would be great to talk about, you know, how they've, how they've jumped on that service, how they're using it. As City Hall gets hooked up, we need to be sure that we don't just have it and do it, but we, we talk about how it's helping, helping you do business, uh, how it's helping us to, uh, provide better service to our citizens, be more, um, functional throughout the day, whatever it may be. But again, find our stories to tell and tell it. Um, a lot of, a lot of communities were, were using it to engage their community, um, and using social media to, to do that, whether it's in community activities, whether it's a, you know, a hackathon that got sponsored, whether it's use of, um, uh, local education and how it's benefiting, uh, residents, um, so we got a little bit, you know, for us to play out, um, but, but I was hearing over and over again, build, build momentum around it, be sure you are telling the very positive stories that are occurring. stories that are occurring, and understand, understand your community's demographic and how it relates. So some of the things we could do ultimately, again, Clearview City's gonna be coming online, so talking with David Rhodes and how, you know, their, their residents are benefiting from it, how it's been a change there. They talked about, some places were having activities, and in one case, there was a tech-oriented Facebook page that the community ran to talk about smart, smart home, connected home type, type services, and create some forum where use of broadband services is being talked about. Like in our community, I see people learning about streaming, how do you move from traditional cable or satellite service to streaming? It's kind of a black box, it's kind of a mystery, but, you know, some of them are creating social opportunities, Facebook pages that were very tech-oriented around the city for people to collaborate. Look at our targeted industries and our community's strategic objectives, and think about how that connectivity can accelerate our progress. And finally, there's an entity called Next Century Cities that I signed us up for, I emailed the mayor and Mike about it, and it's, it's a, it doesn't cost anything to join, it's really a national collaborative kind of an organization. So if you Google Ne, or if you go to nextcentricities.org, they tell stories of other municipalities and how they've used their new broadband connectivity for economic development, some of these ways of building cohesiveness through the community around it. And I checked this afternoon, and they've got a map of the country of all the cities that are in, listed as New Century City, and we're a dot on the map now, so we're listed, but they want to tell our story because ours is a little different in that, a lot of communities either predominantly are having to become a municipal utility, either operating the whole service themselves, or being a, an open access fiber provider, that is, they're just putting the fiber in the ground and letting other people sell service on it, or they're having to partner up with their electric utility to get it done, which would be very difficult for us with an investor-owned utility. So when it's a co-op, you have a better chance of partnering with your utility company to get it done. In our case, we've got competitive providers, and nowhere had I heard anybody else say, not only were you able to get one, but we were able to get two. So I think we're gonna have an interesting story to tell, and hopefully that'll be another avenue where we'll be recognized, you know, potentially nationally as far as, hey, what did you guys do, how are you doing it? But we, you know, we're definitely in the, in the same situation that lots of other communities are dealing with, and we found a unique way to, to deal with it, and we have an opportunity, if we take advantage of it, to create some buzz around it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, tell me about your electrical, the electrical...
Electric co-ops.
Electric co-ops on their broadband, tell me.
Well, they're, they're easy to get into because they're already a utility, they already have a billing system, they already are connected with all of their individual customers, they already know how to roll a truck in a, in the event of a, a service outage or something, and they're eligible for USDA rural broadband money. And there's also gonna be a whole new wave of USDA rural broadband money, it's gonna be coming out.
Well, I'm more concerned about, I know they have the service usage already, and the utilities are already there, the poles are already there, and all of this kind of stuff, but I'm, was more worried about their, their concept of how they're going about it now. I know that they've done so many workings with the electrical and it's failed with the Federal Communication Commission because of all the problems it caused, even all the way down to zoning out zones where there, you can't even talk to your fire, ambulance, and police departments because of their interference that they're causing because of their broadband on their electrical line.
Well, this, they're not doing broadband over, over copper, they're doing fiber, they're building an entirely independent fiber optic cable system, yes, they're, they're just, they're overbuild, they're overbuilding their electrical distribution system with a fiber optic network, and, and essentially creating a separately branded broadband service. So they're not even branding it as part of their electric utility.
Okay.
You know, they're branding it as an entirely independent broadband service, but it's all the same company. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Kevin. Gosh, I don't think I have anything to add for the good of the group, so I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned.